Okay. Thank you, Opumaupi, Sen, Mitisi, Nikason. Good afternoon, this is Director DeWolfe, thank you for being here. I am now calling the board's special meeting to order at 3:01 PM on this Thursday, September 10th, 2020. I will be, for the most part, chairing today's 2020 reopening update work session as Chair of the Executive Committee. And also, obviously, staff will be leading much of our conversation. And so for the record, I will start with Roll, and we'll begin with Director Hampson.
Here.
Director Harris.
Present.
Director Hershey.
Here.
Director Mack. Okay, Director Rankin.
Here.
Director Nevada Smith.
Present.
Okay, thank you. I would also like to note that the superintendent is present, as well as staff who will be presenting as we move through the agenda today. Just for some housekeeping, this meeting is being held remotely, consistent with the governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this remote meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. There is not a public comment opportunity today. And staff will be working to administer the meeting and may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from directors and staff. I know we have a great discussion ahead of us, and so today's reopening update is focused on schedules and attendance. Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement, YF Jesse, will be beginning today's presentation, and will be joined by Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Diana Backer, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, Dr. Caleb Perkins, Executive Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Keshel Toner, Chief Human Resources Officer, Dr. Clover Cott, and Chief Financial Officer, Jillian Burgin. At this moment, I will now hand it over to Chief Jesse to begin with the presentation on schedules, followed by an opportunity for directors' questions and comments before we move into the second topic, which will be attendance. Given we have about an hour and a half today, we want to try to keep our sections within about 45 minutes each. I'm not going to hold us to that, but just want to be thoughtful about how we kind of organize our time. And so now, Chief Jesse, I will turn it over to you, and then just let you know when you'd like me to engage with directors on comments or any questions at the right time. But as of now, I'll turn it over to you.
President DeWolfe, this is Director Mack, I have arrived.
Thank you, Director Mack, let Director, Director Mack join us at 3:04 PM, thank you, Director Mack, and back to you, Chief Jesse.
Thank you, Board President DeWolfe. So today for our conversation, and going to give an updated regarding the schedules, as well as to answer the board directors' questions that were presented to us. So I'll probably do that as expediently as I possibly can. So I'll go ahead and kick us off, and then at the end, I'd love to have questions, answers, and of course, my colleagues are here to help answer the questions and provide additional information as the board would like. Next, please. So for the presentation, we'll be really starting about where are the principles and the values that help guide the creation and guidance for our master schedules, our daily schedules for our schools this upcoming 2021 school year. We'll be talking about some of the things that went in. Do some, illustrate as well as the live posts for some of our schools. Then the review process that was set about, or support of those posting of schedules with the assistance of communications. Of course, we do this work and benefit to our students, as well as our families. And then just briefly, some next steps for us as we move forward with managing daily schedules. Next, please. Through the engagement teams and other engagement with stakeholders, we came and developed our values and some principles to guide us. They're there for us. Based on these particularly five principles, we helped make some key strategic decisions in the development of our schedules that we have for this school year. And really thinking about, as you'll go through this presentation, you'll see why we wanted to have more live instruction. Most certainly, supporting social emotional learning instruction and support, developing community, making sure that we are partnering with our families in remote learning, securing time around academic wellness and supports with most certainly small group instruction, as well as individual instruction, and then consistent and daily experiences across all schools, as well as multiple methods for instructional methods. Next, please. Some of the constraints in the context really do matter when we're thinking about the development of a master schedule. Principals will tell you, it's both art and science, it's got a lot of craft to it. Some of the science parts, most certainly, are the instructional hours, making sure that we're upholding OSPI's requirements for an average of 1,000 instructional hours across the course of the school year. Because of the two waiver days, that's 178, as well as 1,080 hours at our high schools. We also know that we had contractual agreements with the recent MOA with SEA. We know that there are things that help inform us around the workday, the number of preps, early release, and as well as the input that staff have that they give to principals, who are ultimately responsible for crafting the master schedules. And then we have connection between schedules and other activities. We are a school district, so some of the things that we know that we had to craft was a lunch window. Our lunch window is from 11:15 to 1:15 daily. And so all schools can craft and make their lunchtimes within those two hours, allowing families to, and students to get meals at the select 39 meal sites. We also, within that, have other services that we're trying to uphold, as well as sharing staff. We share staff across our schools, and having consistency of schedules help assist with that. We have Skill Center for CTE credits, which are a critical part of our graduation requirements, as well as Running Start and Special Education. So that, those things help impact how we develop the schedule coming forward, as well as the own individual context of schools because of the way they've developed. Master schedules, while they are developed year in, every year, they also have usually a buildup of multiple years of how they got and developed their schedules, as well as just the configuration and adjustments that happen during the school year based on a number of variables such as enrollment, or as well as just the skill set or certification of staff, to just name a few. Next slide, please. Flexibility is still maintained. Teachers, for example, can pair synchronous with asynchronous instruction for what I would call a quasi-block schedule. We have schools that elected to do that. We have also, for us, is the selection of courses and the sequence of them. For example, at the elementary level, we know that we're going to have 16 minutes of math and ELA. Where schools select those and places those, in addition to rotation of the specialist schedule is something critical, and of course, staff have input on where those those particular content areas are placed across the grade levels. Integrated services and support are really critical as we think about how whole group and small group instruction is designed. And then the configuration of our Wednesdays is something that was developed through the MOA that BLTs helped craft at each of our 104 schools. Next slide, please. Also, through the MOA process, we worked, representatives for the district, as well as SEA, helped to define synchronous and asynchronous instruction, so we have these posted here, something that we published. And I know the schools worked to figure these out about how they're going to design that. And of course, meeting the different learning modalities and needs of our students, as well as our families and family schedules, and something that comes through just in the latter presentation on attendance. But it really is really important to really recognize that good instruction really is borrowing from both of these particular delivery models, even with the designations that, let's say, for example, synchronous, there is of course opportunities for asynchronous learning within a particular period or class that we have designed for our students. And again, that is about, again, meeting the needs of our students, as well as your own pedagogical style and the lesson itself, somewhere between direct instruction or project-based learning, if you allow me. So we're excited to have these common definitions out there so that we can work off of that and provide clarity about what we're providing here in Seattle Public Schools this school year. Next slide, please. This should look familiar to the board directors, this is the illustrative model that we had put up there, providing just some guidance of what it looks like. As any leader would know, you need to have common vision. The common vision allows for folks to do some of the sense-making, and again, back to contextualizing it for their own situation. Here, the differences around is some of the things that we know that are where we're calling class time is in pink, and there is some independent or asynchronous work in blue underneath this illustration. Next slide, please. So let's think about what that looks like today. For example, for Maple Elementary, this is a live snapshot from the website that Maple posted their schedule. All 104 schools have turned in and have approved with the input of their staff, their schedules. I think in the course of my career, this is one of the most outstanding turnarounds and teamwork that I've seen around master scheduling. It's quite impressive, and it also balances, again, the principles and values that we're trying to uphold. So for example, for 16 minutes of instruction, something that we wanted to make sure that we had for ELA and math, and then it can, in this particular model, you can see how the specialists are early in the morning at 9:00 to 9:45 for our third graders at Maple Elementary. Next slide, please. So I want to show you what it looks like for the fifth graders at Maple Elementary on Wednesdays. Here we have, again, a classroom meeting starting in the morning. We know that we built in some break with a recess. We have specialists after that, along with lunch and recess, and then some independent small group work, and then our family connection, which is something that we're having across all five days with our elementary, our elementary schools. Next slide, please. Here's the illustrative model that we had at the secondary level for our middles and high schoolers. In this particular illustration, this is really about the pairing, again, as I mentioned earlier, around, you can see in the blue where it says Period 1 Lesson with Period 1 Small Group. That is matched with the Period 1 Lesson in purple, so that after the synchronous lesson, there's an opportunity for asynchronous instruction, as well as synchronous instruction in a small group format for the students in a particular school. And then Wednesdays does some of the same, matching up through the six periods of small group instruction for, most certainly, our select students who need that, as well as additionally acceleration. And then we have independent work that's available for other students who are not engaged in the small group. Think important to note here is also just the check-in for community that would start at this particular model in school that we have here from 9:00 to 9:35 on Wednesdays. You'll see some of the changes and some of the illustrations of the secondary school schedules that are posted coming up. Next slide, please. Here is the difference, instead of the pairing, they, this particular school would do asynchronous, I mean, asynchronous lessons in the morning, having lunch and enrichment activities, and then followed with the pairing of a, of mostly asynchronous lessons schools have developed. I think of note here is that there is the periods 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and as I mentioned earlier, we do share staff, we do also have district-wide services that helps provide us with an opportunity to have consistent scheduling so that students can not only attend their school, but also attend and reach the services that are outside of there, such as Skill Center or Running Start. And then this is something the work that we had done with the high school principals to try to pull us together to provide the consistency and, again, access to services. Next slide, please. Here we are, Robert Eagle Staff Middle School. So they decided to pair up both their live instruction, as well as the asynchronous lesson here. So from 9:00 to 9:50 is the synchronous lesson, and then there would be the break-off from 9:55 to 10:45 with, for the same period for students to do independent work or small group. That continues on for the schedule, so with an A/B schedule, so 1, 2, 3 on Mondays and Thursdays, periods 4, 5, 6 on Tuesdays and Fridays, with Wednesdays having their advocate team meetings. This is a great example of some of the historical things that happen at schools, that's something they've already had developed to create community and provide advisory, as well as the rest of the time allowing for independent reading, library time, as well as small group, and student leadership. Next slide, please. Here we'll have Garfield is our high school example. You can see that they have advisory here on Mondays and Thursdays. And in all reality, it is also on Mondays all the way through Friday, so all five days, they have an advisory as check-ins at Garfield. And then they have the synchronous lessons in the morning and asynchronous and small group in the afternoon as they elected at Garfield. Next slide, please. Garfield, this is what the Wednesday looks like, again, advisory happening on all five days. Here, here's where students can check in and have discussions, and then the small group. Some of the support team, obviously, high schools have a ton of activities, as well as student leadership opportunities, and it helps, of course, with the power of engagement and development of our young adults. Next slide, please. So with that, the review process, the complexity of the turnaround, all the things that I ever mentioned on the constraints and context, as well as the flexibility to provide leaders with the need to check in, give some coaching and consultation, some different ways, not only on the things that are compliance-oriented around instructional hours, which we do have to review, but as also for our Director of Operations and our Director of Schools to have an opportunity to maximize opportunities for our students to learn, and of course, meet the flexibility and the needs of our families. Lots of questions came in, lots of work, so that they could work back with their staff. They had input, whether that's a BLT or their teaching and learning committee, we have different names for different constructions of the leadership teams at each of our schools, but ultimately getting that input so the building principal can work forward and get their schedules done, meaning knowing the needs of our families to have a posted schedule so they can manage their own family schedules as well for the upcoming school year. Again, incredible work, and thank you very much to the communications teams for helping us get those up on the website, as illustrated in the previous slides for Maple, Robert Eagle Staff, and Garfield. Next slide, please. So the benefit to our students, consistency and predictability is something really that we have to accentuate and really embrace, especially underneath COVID. Rituals provide, and routine and structure help diminish some of the feelings that students and staff can have around anxiety in these unpredictable times. And so we want to address that, and so we do want to meet sure that we have consistency across our schedules. And we also know that families have students across many schools, and something they've asked for, flexibility. We have obviously a diverse student set here, different needs, different learning modalities and preferences. Those can, are fluid, and so we want to make sure that we had an opportunity to not only provide live instruction, but asynchronous lessons as well, an opportunity for students to access the learning on their own independent time, whether that's something that they individually, for the student, prefer or benefit from, or something, again, as I've said, that meets the family's schedules or their own needs as well. Just was fielding an email this afternoon of, hey, my student really doesn't want to participate in the live instruction, could they do the asynchronous only? And my answer is yes, they can do that. So then we have, of course, access and opportunity. That is something that we want to uphold in our equity policy. And then flexibility in working in partnership with our families. I know Keshel Toner's on this, she's usually really elated about the fact that, I think, and I agree, this is some of the shift that we have here in public education is an opportunity to shift away from being the experts, but actually being the partners with our families and our students as we work day in, day out, educating our youth, and that our instruction, our systems are reflective of the diversity that we have in our community and uphold the values that we have collectively. Next slide, please. So next steps, of course, these are unprecedented times, kind of borrow the 80/20 rule. It's much we plan, where we know that we'll have probably about 20% of the things we'll still need to require to shift on. We know that enrollment is one of those things that we will have to monitor as I move staffing, and also just the needs of our students. And then the last part is just really around the directors of schools and the learning support teams, which are cross-departmental. Folks will be working directly out at the school sites to make sure that we are effectively using our daily schedules to meet the needs of our students and our families as they are, as we have. And then also just what is our systematic approach to addressing things, anywhere from attendance to the needs for technology, as well as our wellness and mental health needs, basic needs that we have out there and connecting them to the resources that we have available. So these are important things to know, I'm glad to have these schedules posted. Next slide, please. These are the questions that were asked by directors. I'm hoping that we were able to get these questions answered in the presentation today, but again, my colleagues stand available to help answer any further questions that the board may have at this time. Next slide, please. Director DeWolfe.
Yes, Chief Jesse. Okay, I'm happy to help facilitate our director questions and comments here. And let's start with backwards from our alphabetical, we'll start with Director Rivera.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, I got a lot of fans going in the background. Thank you for all this, I, I'm trying to take it all in, I, I'm, and I'm trying to keep my questions regarding attendance separate, because I know we're going to go over that later, I don't want to overlap too much here, but, and I know that, I, well, let me ask first, are you going to go through the questions here? Because some of my questions are listed on the screen, so I feel like I should just let them get answered there, or should I ask now?
Director Rivera Smith, I tried to answer those questions, if you want any further information about that, like, I think one of your questions were teachers engaged in the building of their, of their school schedules. I'm happy to go further, wherever you would like to go.
Okay, so again, are you going to go through these questions after our questions and comments, or should I just pull them off the screen?
Director Rivera Smith, I think what he was saying was he incorporated these questions into the presentation. For example, how are teachers engaged in the building of their school schedules? As an example, if you'd like to kind of engage further with them, that's what he's asking.
Awesome, I see, sorry about that.
They were technically answered.
Yeah, I understand. So then I might have missed that one, because, well, how were, do you repeat then, how were teachers engaged?
Yes, so teachers are engaged in the process, directly in the process of developing school schedules every year. They always give input, here's the content I would like to teach, here's the courses. I would like to do partnering, some cases at the elementary level, for example, I will only, I could be the content expert at my grade level. That's something that I know that happens at a number of our schools, especially during this particular situation. So the engagement process is there, there are different levels of engagement based on the decisions that do need to be made formally. So anywhere from assignments and courses, that's additional input, and just the sequencing of courses in the partnering, those are things that are ongoing, and the professionals at the school work together, so they have that. But there are things, like I said, like on Wednesdays, the formal, formal BLTs, every school having a BLT, has to formally vote to.
Hello?
Any more complexity to this conversation is, if they were to move from a six-period day to like a seven-period day, that requires a two-thirds staff vote to make that change. Those are just some examples of how teachers are engaged, but everybody, every educators at every school were engaged in the development, one way or the other, on their, on their schedule.
Okay, and I hear that, your response to the question, it's on the next slide, actually. Why do we require the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 for high schools versus, we have a couple of high schools who have already been using the 2, was it? 2, 4, 1, 1, 3, 5, 2, 4, 6. So, and I hear you about the consistency we're trying to achieve, but it what, how, how, how is it hurting us to let schools continue the 2, 4, 6, 1, 3, 5 schedule?
I'll have Executive Director Perkins ask that, I think I've heard probably my voice a little bit much, I'll have him chime in here, please.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Chief Jesse, this is Executive Director Caleb Perkins, I assume you can hear me. So, in brief, we needed to have all high schools follow one pattern so that they could engage in district-wide opportunities, the most specific example being Skill Center. So Skill Center is a course that requires students to be scheduled in three periods. It currently had, we had over 200 students from our district, across the district, from every high school interested in Skill Center preregistering, and so to, if we implemented a system where, in this case, Skill Center courses were either going to be periods 1, 2, 3, or 4, 5, 6, because again, they have to be three periods long per state requirements. We couldn't have, some high schools doing 1, 2, 3, and some high schools doing 1, 3, 5, because otherwise, they'd be in different, those periods would happen at different times, and students wouldn't be able to engage. This is actually a constraint that exists pre-COVID. Schools need to make changes to ensure that students can engage in Skill Center courses. During, pre-COVID, this would be about reserving the whole morning or the whole afternoon, because most high schools have six periods per day. So the shift is that now there's, it's every other day to ensure that we're not having students engage in too many courses in one day. So ultimately, we did need to decide one consistent approach to ensure that students would have access to these district-wide programs, and that's where we decided with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. I will just share that for those who were planning 1, 3, 5, 2, 4, 6, in many cases, and we worked directly with them to help them figure out how to, in some cases, move those classes so that, that teachers had the connections with students and the sequencing that they had hoped when they were planning in the spring. I hope that helps.
That does.
Director Rivera Smith, do you have, do you have more questions, or can I move to the next director?
I have one more question, so I'm looking at the Wednesday schedule you had up, I think it was Robert Eagle Staff. It's not on the screen anymore clearly, but, um, and see that, so for Wednesday, advocate team meetings, library time, et cetera, is Wednesday purely a drop-in time then? Are we, are we just, I'm thinking of kids at home, thinking of how this really plays out at home for families. And it seems like there's very little, is that what that is? Is it purely drop-in whenever they want, in the hours of 9:00 to 3:00?
Yeah, and I appreciate that question, Director Rivera Smith. That's the, they don't have the exact, I think they got, they had to get a little creative here, and the text box is a lot of information, trying to fit it on the screen. There is always more work for us to do to make clarity, we'll go back to them, but for this particular reason, they, they will have, all students will have. We'll go back to them, but for this particular reason, they will have, all students will have to attend the advocate team meetings. They split her off the students for that. And then there is small group throughout the day, like I had illustrated for Garfield High School. There are broken out times for those small groups, so it's not just drop in. It is designed specifically to meet the needs of the students based on the input and assessment information that educators have and the individual stories strength and need of students to have them jump into small group. Or in other cases, to go off and do asynchronous lesson, but then again, that's dependent on the need of the student.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have another question.
Director Rankin.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I actually spent a considerable amount of time over phone and email working through some of the schedules with kind of the last schools to figure out their schedules, so I don't have questions particularly about this. My question that may be related to attendance is how are we, so I know we have a lot of I don't want to say rigid as a pejorative, but people who want to know what to depend on, yes, no, right, wrong, follow directions, do what the teacher says, that's families and students. And I'm just, so I'm wondering the, what is the communication to families about the flexibility that is available to them? And how are we making sure that families know that they don't have to, you know, drive their sanity into the ground, trying to make sure their child shows up for everything in the way that it's presented to them? How are we making sure that they know that they just need to communicate with their teacher, that they can access things, you know, that are recorded later on? And how are we making sure that teachers are not, or have all that information too and are being flexible and students are not being penalized?
I really appreciate that question, Director Rankin. As a former special education teacher myself, only because there's so many different needs for our students, you know, each one having very, you know, unique learning modalities and again, experiences and just interest. But I would say around that is for us, that's the beauty of Strong Start. Strong Start was an opportunity to not only just initially develop relationships with our students, which are absolutely critical, getting to know them, but then we also have, as you and I discussed around the family connection or what OSPI is referring to as the universal screener. So we know that we have a set of standard questions that all of our educators are asking each one of our students and families to find out just that. What's going on? What's your needs? What are some things that your student may need that's different than is in this schedule? That time, that connection, that relationship building should continue on. That's why we have family connection time built in for younger students and also for our secondary schools to further adjust where needed. So the educator, the teacher should be the one that should know that, learn that, learn more about it if they need to adjust. As we know, students are, can change very quickly and their needs, so that's what should be happening. I think the last part is too is the teams. That's why we have a team approach. How people come together, how the FSW, the counselor, the school nurse, for example, the school administrator coming together when there are issues that need flexibility that you're saying that may just not be in the toolbox for that particular teacher for the student.
Okay, is, I'm just wondering, I guess, if it's kind of centrally laid out in messaging to principals and teachers. For example, when we, when we, in the spring, we had the situation where most buildings had the understanding that the grading situation was changing and we were trying to, you know, support students and hold harmless, but then I would hear of, you know, students getting penalized for missing a test and a test that we kind of decided shouldn't have even been administered. And so I just want to be sure that this is really consistently and strongly to, you know, even students who would be tier one in the social emotional needs or the typical responses, that we just have a general agreement on everybody that, you know, you participate, you do what you need to do, you do what works for your family and we'll still support you and you'll still access education.
Yes, and you'll hear some of this in the presentation on attendance like you were alluding to. But I just wanted to reiterate that again, everybody has to do that family connection and get that information. That is a requirement. They must get it done this month. We are really essentially, we have trained on it. And we've also trained on the ability to manage the different instructional needs of our students. And then we have the built in release time that we are able to negotiate in on Wednesdays so that we can continue to train up and adjust. And then I'll just leave the attendance and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about the tiered supports as well as the district oversight and how directors of schools and learning support teams around our flags.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Director Mack.
Hi, yeah, can we go back to the questions around the one, two, three or the one, four, or two, four, six schedule decision? I did hear in the presentation that one of the constraints was considering students running start because I think this, this this structure in middle school may not have as much of an impact to students as the high school schedule. And that perhaps the shuffling around of when the courses were being taught and which periods they were taught in could be shifted around to accommodate the teachers who felt like having math after lunch is the best structure, the different reasons why they needed to have things how they wanted them. But my question is about the running start students who have to register for those classes that are off campus or at, you know, specific times and that they would have signed up their schedule to match that. And having the shift now with this schedule maybe not matching it and potentially their running start courses being overlapping with their high school courses. Is how, how are we handling that for those students? Do they have the opportunity to rejuggle their other courses, their SPS courses to accommodate? And maybe if they, you know, were supposed to be in fourth period math, they get first period math or whatever. Are they able to move classes at this point? And is that happening so that running start students are being accommodated?
Chief Jesse, would it be helpful if I responded?
Yes, please, go ahead.
This is Caleb Perkins again. So two, two pieces. One, yes, when it was clear that we were going to one, two, three, four, five, six, it's our understanding that a number of high schools that wanted to make those shifts to match up running start courses did so. But on top of that, the good news in connecting with leadership in Seattle colleges is that the vast majority of courses at all three campuses of the Seattle colleges where most of our running start students are, are offering asynchronous options. And therefore they will be able to accommodate students at a variety of times during the day for the same range of courses.
Okay, but, but are, are we actively supporting students in juggling their schedule? And I guess that's a question at this point too about, I mean, we're all overloaded, counselors at all the schools are massively overloaded. And then, you know, how many students are actually showing up, et cetera? Like the master's schedule at high school is already really complicated with matching the right number of students to the teachers, to the specific course and the time. And my question again is, are requests to change schedule or courses being accommodated actively at this point? Or or is it what was, you know, what was designed a few weeks ago or whenever it was set and they're not accommodating course changes? Are we accommodating course change requests for students?
The short answer is yes. And there's always, again, pre-COVID.
Okay, that's not on schedules.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It is because it's about their schedule and whether or not they can change their schedule. So yes, it is. It's very directly on point, President Duwol. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite hear your response, Mr. Perkins.
Yeah, so as it happens even pre-COVID, there's a lot of shifting around that happens in the fall related to running start because college courses can move around as well, so that's happening. Tara McFarland, who's part of the College of Pre-Readiness Team, is leading the school counselors with guidance on how to approach that, given the additional options we have this year with more asynchronous options, but it is, it is happening actively.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. No further questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, let's make sure our questions are on topic here. So Director Hersi, up to you.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. A quick question that I have is I've been hearing some rumblings around that some elementary schools are only allotting thirty minutes or like forty five minutes for lunch. And that is not enough time for them to get over to a meal site and to get back. I've heard that some buildings have had workarounds, but that the district has been denying one hour lunches. Can you give me any feedback or information on that?
Yes, Director Hersi. So that's, that's something that we had discussed all summer long about the meal sites and about the distance and the timing. And so one of the things that we designed and tried to make sure that the locations were within even forty five, you know, so that you could walk there and back, so that basically like a mile and a half. So we would try to work on the distances to try to accommodate the, that's why we gave it forty five, forty five minutes coupled with the regular teacher workday that Chief Cod could talk about. So stretching it, so we got the forty five minutes coupled with instructional hours met, coupled with the fact that we were working to make sure the locations of the meal sites were within a reachable zone to try to accommodate the forty five minutes. If there was something else that had there, we can again, provide the flexibilities as meals is a basic need and we would want to make sure to accommodate that if somebody initially had that. And then the last point on that issue, because we talked that deeply into this, was about grabbing meals for multiple days too. So head of, Aaron, who's the head of nutrition, has also been working on that as well.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. It's just for me, from my perspective, thinking about our students furthest away from educational justice. Like, you know, given in a scenario where we have a student who lives a mile away, they're going to take their full forty five minute lunch break to walk to get food and then I'm not really seeing time for them to be able to eat food within that forty five minutes. Especially when the rain comes, like that's going to take longer. So I'm just really wondering, how are we going to get to a place to where we are providing enough time and buildings aren't having to make up with breaks and things of that nature? It's just, it's concerning to me that, because this seems like a big equity issue on my end, and I know that y'all have had detailed conversations about this, but we have not. And I'm just really struggling to see how the district could deny an additional fifteen minutes to a school for an hour lunch break so that we can give our kids adequate time to have a lunch break and not necessarily a span of time where they have to walk to get their food and then as soon as they're back, they have to hop on a computer and they might not even have necessarily enough time to eat. So there are just a lot of, a lot of problems that could be solved with an additional fifteen minutes, but you know, maybe I'm missing something here. Maybe there's some piece that, you know, I'm not grasping completely, so I would love to hear some additional feedback.
Yeah, we definitely have the shared, we definitely have the shared interest to make sure that students could get their meals in a timely manner and access it. That is something that's been again, on the forefront. I think the issue does get around some of the constraints and I know perhaps Chief Podesta, he's talked about, hey, if we got to move or be flexible, either here, either he or Chief Bergy can talk about it because I know they've also been shared in those conversations.
Yeah, I understand that. I think that what I would just say in response is that we've done a pretty terrible job in terms of like making sure that all of our families know what resources are available or even how to reach out to them. So for me, that's kind of a moot point. That doesn't necessarily get to the heart of my question because we can have these conversations on this call all day long. But then we still have like half of our kids who are not logging in, families that are hitting me up on a daily basis, asking me for information as their board director. And so, you know, at some phase, we need to figure out like, okay, yes, that answer satisfies my question at this moment, but there are still thousands of families out there that don't know what they don't know, right? So I'm really just struggling to wrap my head around at what phase are we going to have like a serious conversation about what we can do on our end? Because obviously there's a communication breakdown somewhere in our system and it needs to be addressed.
This is Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta. I would say we are monitoring closely. We serve ten thousand students on Tuesday or excuse me, on Wednesday, a little bit less than that on Tuesday, which is more than we had been serving during the summer and late spring. We have added sites. We are monitoring other ways to deliver meals if the transit back and forth to school sites. So people are aware and taking care of the service and beyond what they, taking advantage of the service beyond what we had done before. We will monitor that very closely and if schedules or other impediments, you know, become a barrier, we will keep looking for ways to limit that. But so far with the, with the schedules and this week, we haven't seen a drop off in, in demand. In fact, the new sites seem to be serving people well.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that the sites aren't serving people well. What I'm saying is, is that there is a gap in our system where even though our sites, I'm sure, are serving people well. My big question is for our students who are going to utilize these sites, it is an inequity. While some students who have the luxury of sitting at home with food in their refrigerators to eat and enjoy a proper lunch break, we have students in our system who are utilizing that break often from minute to minute to go and retrieve food. So what I'm saying is, what is exactly, someone explain to me, why are we denying additional fifteen minutes for lunchtime? What is the instructional hour barrier that cannot be overcome? Because I'm not, frankly, just, you know, to put it bluntly, I don't believe that there is a barrier for us to overcome, but I'm really trying to understand what am I missing here? Why are we denying additional fifteen minutes for lunch for kids to go get their food?
Hi, Director Hersi. Jo Lynn Bergy here. So nothing that I'm going to say isn't going to make anyone happier, but we did try to reach a longer lunch period for the things, for the reasons that you're saying, and it's far from perfect. But what we ran up against is we couldn't find enough instructional time to meet the state requirement and at the same time meet the CBA requirements of only having teachers there seven and a half hours. So those were the constraints that we had to work around, which we totally understand are not student focused, right? And so we tried to expand that time period. I think that what our expectation is, is that as we understand these situations are arising, we would expect that there is some grace for students to be able to use the time that they need to get situated when they get back from lunch. And so as you know, being a teacher, it can't be wide open, but we need to understand each student's perspective about their day, right? And however we need to adjust to make it work for those kids, we need to make those adjustments to make it work for those kids. I'll stop there.
No, and that's really helpful. Thank you, Jo Lynn. Another question that I have is why did it take me asking the same question three times to get an appropriate answer? You know, this is the same runaround that I think a lot of our families, when we're talking about us at the top with educational jargon and trying to figure out like what is the real answer to a problem that I think a lot of folks are frustrated by. So in the future, if we could just get down to the meat of it, I would really appreciate that. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Totally hear you. You know that I'm for getting down to the bare bones of the response. Thank you.
Most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Thank you, Chief Bergy. Director Harris.
Thank you. Let me ping off of Director Hersi's question. So have we sent letters? So have we sent letters to the State Board of Education and the State Superintendent about this exact issue?
This is Jolynn again, Jolynn Bergy again. Not that I'm aware of about this exact issue. I do think that there is some ability for us to be have some flexibility. I mean, that's what the OSPI rules about, what counts as attendance and participation really are focused on, right? It's it's making sure that students can participate at the level that works for them. Just like when we know that maybe some kids can't be on in the morning because of either family situation, work situation, I have to help my younger brother or sister situation. But there is the autonomous participation that we are counting as attendance. And that if students, if that we have to flex time for students because of those situations, we can make those accommodations. Wyatt, would you hopefully agree with that?
No, that's that's whether whatever the need is, that's where the flexibility has to be there. And that'll be covered in the more certainly in the attendance section of it.
Okay, so if this student is consistently fifteen minutes late back into class and has to say, I went to get my food, aren't we outing those children and students? And what harm could sending a letter to the State Board and the Superintendent of Public Instruction do for this very specific issue? Two questions.
So we I want to be thoughtful that we we have a short amount of time.
Thank you, President Dewolfe.
Please answer quickly.
I'll I'll quickly answer that question. Yes, we could send something to them. We do talk to OSPI. I know Chief Burgie and I do talk to OSPI about some things. And so we will directly, we can directly raise that and we can send a a formal letter stating as such about just this conversation.
And aren't we outing our students that have to walk to get to lunch by doing it this way as opposed to adding the fifteen minutes in? The haves and the have-nots?
There's a lot of students, just based on the experiences that are shared with me across our schools. Kids are coming and going for a variety of reasons. That would happen in any given school day, whether that we were in place. But given that we're in remote learning, it has only increased for just meeting the needs of what's going on for different families for different reasons, as well as just the needs for our students.
I would suggest that's non-responsive answer, but I will pass.
Director Hampson.
Hi, yeah, I have some follow-on questions to that. So let me just state that I I do have two question areas. One is connected to what we stated before, and I'm going to ask or what was just discussed prior. So I'm going to ask for some clarity about that, but I do want to have a chance to ask my second question as well. So in terms of instructional hours, I believe that we have, in our resolution, directed for there to be advocacy. I personally have written a letter around advocating with the State Board of Education for waiver of instructional hours in terms of what what it consists of. I I think that there's generally a lot of flexibility. But I do believe that the district has that directive to provide that. They are meeting about it in some way, shape, or form on the sixteenth and doing rulemaking. I don't know all the details of that that is on their calendar. And and I I guess I'm still struggling to, when I look at at a range of schedules, the whether it's our district or other districts, building to building, and then looking at the information that you provided, Chief Jesse and Chief Burgie, about our instructional hours. It looks like we have a little bit of of extra time such that we could have that flexibility within buildings to do a full hour. Is there some aspect of that that's that's due to contract, the MOU? Or because I'm just not, the math isn't really playing out for me in terms of the of of why we can't have that full hour.
Yeah, this is this is Jolynn Bergy. We don't, I can't get that calculation to work. So I've been the one running the calculations. That calculation doesn't work for us. I've tried because of the instructional hour days that we waived and the strong start. We didn't have enough time left. And then the CBA says that we have to, teachers can only be onsite or at work seven and a half hours with the thirty-minute duty-free lunch.
Okay, yeah, so I wasn't sure if it was the educator part of the day. And I I know that there is some piece of it that, I mean, we do have a recess component built in. And I don't know if we're stuck with the day based on that. I'm not I'm not sure what flexibility there is there. But that kind of leads me.
Well, we had to put the recess part in to even make it as far as we did.
Say that again?
We had to put the recess recess part in to just make it as far as we did with instructional hours.
Okay, well, I'll I'll try to pull up the what I was seeing in terms of the the time. But that was part of why we had put in our resolution the request to advocate or the directive to advocate for more flexibility in instructional hours. And that kind of goes to my other question, which, so one, that's my expectation that we would be advocating for that as a district. Two, the the other piece of the question is, or of my question, has to do with the way that we communicate the the day, the sample day, looks to me like what you would want to communicate to as far as expectations for building leaders and teachers. It's not what, and I don't know who this falls to, but what we are communicating to families via our website and the expectations. We've gotten a tremendous amount of feedback about that. And when I've tried to go in and reconcile, and I'm looking at these, you know, sixty minutes of math, and then, you know, it takes going into the individual school schedules that you presented and some arrows and and asterisks that demonstrate that, oh, that's not sixty minutes of math every day. That's, you know, fifteen minutes of instruction and then some independent work time. And it appears incredibly onerous. And I think that's one thing that we need to really, given that we haven't actually reached the fourteenth yet, that we need to restructure how we communicate what expectations are as far as those school schedules, because it really is overwhelming to look at. I can't, there's no, as a parent, I look at that and say, there's no way that my child can do, spend an hour doing this and an hour doing that, you know, online live with their teacher. And that that's what it looks like because of how it's presented. So it's a, it's really a poor form of communication, whereas the individual actual schedules are are better examples. So I think that's one thing that we need to, you know, say that we haven't done well and we can do better in terms of how we communicate that. I'd like to know, because we had discussion as a board about that these decisions, the expectation about, you know, traditionally BLTs have made these decisions. What's an example of of something that when schedules were submitted to central office that was overridden?
One example would be less than a fifty-minute instructional period, synchronous instructional period at a secondary level. So we had, there was a couple of schools trying to get underneath fifty minutes of synchronous instruction instructional periods so that we knew that, you know, every class had to have two fifty-minute synchronous instructional hours. That's very much mirrors what would happen if we were in in brick and mortar. But it also allows, you know, at least twice a week that the they have class that has ability to bring the the learners, the students together.
Okay, so I think kind of having a better understanding of that from, because I think the overall sense that we that I felt, since that wasn't really communicated to us, that, oh, we're going to be checking for compliance in terms of these things, that it felt like that decision was being pulled out of the individual building hands. And 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 that is not, I don't think, it's not what was stated in your first slide in terms of expectations. Can you go back to that first slide around the community input?
Please quickly, we need to move to the next section.
So the the one thing that I want to state really clearly that I that I believe we as a board and as staff and as community need to get closer aligned about is the consistent predictable daily experiences across schools. I, what that meant in the spring and what that means for potentially a full year of remote learning primarily is are is very different. And consistency, in my mind, has to do with things like making sure that all, you know, laptop delivery is done in the same way and that there's a consistent set of, you know, handouts, that every student is getting paper instructions as well as access to online instructions, that they're getting six consistent access to tech with its headphones. There are expectations, I think, around consistency that that is true versus what the the kind of flexibility that is needed. And I don't think that we're we're necessarily on the same page. I think we're we're hearing that as a reason to do certain things is because, you know, quote unquote, we ask for consistency. And I don't think we're on the same page in terms of what that consistency is.
If anybody would like to respond quickly, please, we really ask, we need to move to attendance.
Yeah, I'll directly respond to that. Thank you, Director Hampson. I think one of the things that I hear out of that is a need for a continued conversation. I'd love to meet with you along with Chief of Communications, Kerry Campbell, to just have that conversation about getting clearer about how we're communicating and where there is the flexibility so that we have that ability to, you know, for families to understand this, so it's not so mucky, as you were mentioning, if you're up for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll hold my questions for email because I want to get to attendance. So I will now turn it back over to Chief Jesse to begin that presentation on the second topic, which is attendance. I do have some questions for that section and just want to do a time check. We are at four. This is scheduled to go until four-thirty. So Chief Jesse, over to you.
Thank you, Board President Dewolfe. She's going to move this slide, so she'll pull up the slide deck. There, we're going to be discussing three distinct areas regarding attendance. One is just about the why. Why why is attendance? What what does it do for educators? How do they use that information? And then the next one is just around the technical. I know some of the questions that came from board directors around some of the technical information. Second, second slide, please. Technical information, so what is constituted attendance? State-led, recently, I was able to revise some of the the WAC underneath this. And then also, the last part is just about practices, educator practices themselves. What do you do? What's the response? I know that was some of the questions that came up from the previous session. So next slide, please. So for us, we want to make sure that we first are building relationships. Again, Strong Start provided an opportunity for us to build those relationships, what's going on, and then also engaging our families with some information so that we can learn as a district, as a staff, to what are the needs specifically for the families and the students as we start remote learning, an unprecedented event for us for the 2021 school year. As we take that and we think about one of the key variables or the key pieces of data is attendance. Having students just upfront participate, and I'll separate that from engagement, is just knowing, hey, yeah, we got, you know, did they show up? What were they, where did they show up? What are some patterns that we have going on? And then additionally, using other pieces of information, whether that's direct interview, survey information or some of our more traditional academic or social-emotional learning data points that we may have. Coupled with this, what what are students qualified for? Are they qualified for Yale Services, Special Education, MKV? These are really things that are really important and and you'll hear that in this presentation because we want to have an inclusive environment. And then also, it's reflective of us as adults, as a system. Are we responding to the needs of our students and our families? We know that we are always underneath continuous improvement. And so where where can we continue to learn and adjust and react like the previous conversation around, for example, for lunches? That down here for the other pieces are, so instead of just a regular approach of going after students, you know, what is a truancy? It's really about a a position of inquiry and support in this time or moving forward. I think this is, again, like some of the changes we have around family partnership. There should be a radical shift. I think we should have also another radical shift around just how we handle absences. Again, trying to learn more to meeting the needs of the students, the families. And then how are we learning from that, again, and adjusting wherever needed? So you'll hear that in some of the pieces moving as well in the next slide. Next, please. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. So this are some of the things that we do, just a, how do you, what constitutes attendance? How do you take it? Well, in this environment, it's, you know, instead of just a a student showing up, it's also just about daily logins. Are they logged in? Are they on Teams? Did they log into Schoology? Does there are other interactions around attendance? Did we get a message? Did we have an email or a phone call with a with a parent, a family member, a student? And then then some of the new practices, you know, obviously, that started this last spring are around, did they participate in a posted assignment or task? That underneath the new WAC, it constitutes a form of attendance. And so did they get that work done? It doesn't even have to be done during the traditional bell times, but as actually can handle outside of regular school hours as well. And so we have our educators taking typically attendance through login. Did they show up? Did they participate? But also, again, is to, if they didn't, they have another opportunity to look in and say, oh, wow, they didn't show up. But you know what? I did notice that they were able to complete some of the assignments. Or they participated in that, or I just simply had a conversation with a family member about what some of the things they need for their student, they're handling some things at home, whether that for that day or for that week or whatever else may be the case, again, around the flexibility. Next slide, please. So excused, so we have an abundance of issues in response to this, again, unprecedented case of COVID-19. Lots of things are going on for families here in Seattle Public Schools. We want to respect the individual situations that we have, anywhere from what would be traditionally illness, but also a family member illness or condition, student's employment or family work schedule. What are the necessary tools, connectivity, broadband? Most of us have had our own experiences of of either our phone or hotspot or our internet not working. And so we most certainly don't, we want to call that an excused absence. And then other forms of any other circumstance that may come up, and that has been, can be handled by the school leader. Next slide, please. So further, attendance is recorded. We put that into Power School. That's a traditional source. We've had to change some of the coding, again, in response to COVID and some of the things that may happen. We do have ability within a forty-eight-hour turnaround. If we have not heard from a student or a family member, you know, that really does become the trigger for us to say, wow, that student didn't attend. So that would be marked as an absence. And then that can be picked up and I'll and I'll tell a little bit later in a couple of slides about what happens out of that. But again, calculation is that of the hundred and seventy-eight days. There is no tardies or truancy, truancy for most certainly this first month as we have remote start according to OSPI. But we will not have tardies for the entire 2021 school year as as we have planned now. Of course, when there is an absence, the parent is notified notified that day. Someone has reached out to them to figure out what's going on. Again, we're in an inquiry cycle, then a tiered support plan, because all schools are required to have a tiered support plan specifically, not only related to other things, but most certainly attendance in this case. Next slide, please. So we have a progress monitoring. It's not just the teacher, but it is a team approach at the school level. What's going on? It's not just the teacher, but it is a team approach at the school level, what's going on. We want to analyze some of the patterns of the behavior, patterns of the attendance. It may be for the whole, whole day, maybe partial day, maybe some of this particular periods at the secondary level. We want folks to look at that. But we also want central office. We've dedicated two specific staff members to analyze the attendance data. So we'll be keeping track of that and working that, generating reports, pushing that information out, as I'll show you in some of the dashboards that are coming up. And then just ongoing learning support teams. Again, the director of schools, learning support, where, where are the, you'll allow me, issues? Or some of the things where we see some of the patterns around logging in, participation rates, so that we can go out there and do inquiry with those staff to further better our practices and think about that. Is that a happening, you know, where, what is that isolated to a teacher or classroom, school? Or is that something we have to shift here as a district? We also have the data tools such as Atlas. I know it's been documented and presented to the board in previous work sessions. We also have Home Room, which I just discussed last night at the school board meeting. But one of the key things about those two tools is that we are able to break down into different student groups and then also about the different services, programs, as well as disaggregated data by different program, race, gender, grade level, courses, of course, if you allow me. Next slide, please. I'd love to show you these tools. I know this is moving a little quickly. Happy to send some more slides. Or again, if you would like to have a separate session with us to, to talk about this, I'm happy to do that. Here on the left, you'll see a dashboard, attendance dashboard that is in Atlas. Just a, this is just a, an opportunity. There's other different charts and graphs that we have in Atlas, specific to attendance. This one just gives you a year-to-year, gives you a nice all-school district glance. But you can also get that for your individual school. And then the one on the right is really more about the practitioner view for Home Room. Could be just for a particular teacher or grade level, broken out for different groups of students to monitor their attendance by period. Here is the illustrated in this example on the right. Next slide, please. This is the last piece. So our business intelligence team in DOTS has developed a tool for us to have a view within Atlas, specific to multiple pieces of data so that we can triangulate information, not only for if they are marked as attending, but also the login information for Teams, Schoology. And we are now helping to work on integrating, which will take some time, CSO. These tools take some time to develop. Right now, because we have live data, we are doing some of our data integrity checks to make sure that the data, as it says, is actually intended. Coupled with, we have those to enter the data, the teachers themselves. We are doing ongoing training. It's a new way of taking attendance, not in the tool itself at Power School, but it is new ways, like I was mentioning earlier, is just what is asynchronous? When does that happen? And, you know, hey, I'm used to doing tardies, for example, and they're no longer there. So next up. No, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Sorry. School tiered response. I think Director Rankin was mentioning, like, so what happens? Like, where do they come together? What happens when there is absence? How to come around on this? So they take the daily attendance. Say they weren't able to connect with the family or the student within 40 hours. That escalates to a team. The team takes that information. They may know a story. Somebody else in the office may have had a, had a, or on that team may have had a phone call. They already, already understand that should be an excused absence because of the conditions. Something's going on with the family, a work schedule, an illness, whatever. And so that could already resolve it, working in a team approach. But there may be a need for further assistance, whether that's connectivity, help, safety needs that the team does need to work to address, differentiating their approach based on the needs of the family and the student. And so we are working with all our schools to have that outlined, making sure that we do follow up. Because they may have to, you know, like I said, make and change for the flexibility based on the needs of the family or the student and so forth. I'll give you one example of why this should be an inquiry-based session. We had a young male student. Then we gave him a, knew we gave the family and him a device, had it on there. And the staff at the school were wondering, why? Why is the student not attending? Really wanted to figure it out. Got, was able to get a, an interpreter on the line. We had the principal and the interpreter and the, and the parent. And the student all got on the line. They had a great conversation. Found out that the student and the, and the parent, they, they were able to figure it out that they needed to actually log in and use the device to, to attend the class. It was an awesome opportunity. The parent was there to reinforce the ability to attend the class. The staff were able to make some adjustments to meet the family's schedule. So that that partnership with the family and just the needs and partner with our families. So it was a, it was a touching story of how we need to shift. Again, in previous times, it'd be like a letter home. Your students show up and now we're really trying to do the more personal outreach and then also, like I said, inquiry. Next, next slide, please. So these are some of the questions today. Again, in this presentation, I tried to answer the questions that were asked. If there's any further questions, I or my colleagues can help answer them. Thank you very much, Board President DeWolfe.
Thank you, Chief Jesse. Okay, we'll start with Director Hampson and thank you for the presentation.
Thanks. Yeah, I would, that, I, I asked for data and, and I appreciate that, seeing some of that. And so I would love to, to see more of that. And I hope that we will be getting regular updates because I think we will have hard decisions to make if we don't see the, the numbers that we need to in terms of engagement. And so I, I think my question about that is, when we have, how are we facilitating students connecting through other mechanisms besides their individual teachers? If they're not getting online, if, you know, their Wi-Fi is out, they don't have access to a cell phone, they're a foster student. How, what is the, the protocol? Do, in, in that data, I didn't have a chance to see it, went by too fast. Is there a note for, you know, did anyone call this student to check in on them? Meaning, since it's not just walking in the door, is anyone calling or stopping by or doing anything every single day to make sure that? I know that we historically would have called, so, but it can't just be the attendance person. Sometimes it's got to be the, the counselor. So is that being tracked in that same way?
Yes, Director Hampson. And that's, thank you for pulling up that slide. That's, that's what this process, that's why we want to have it documented. They do have to document their outreach and their methods. Home Room, as I was mentioning yesterday, I know you and I have had that conversation as well. It's just, you know, documentation that who did call, where were they at? One of the things nice about Home Room, that we've worked with the MKV team. I, I know it's a long story here, but previous, you know, using Excel spreadsheets is, is, is something that I'm trying to get rid of that illness to the system. Because when we can't share that information and someone like Tyre Williams or Alicia Jessie, you know, those folks work at MKV and Foster, they need to have that information too. So just only a couple of years ago, they would just call. They would have to call the individual teacher and do check-ins as opposed to, everybody could have view of putting that information around the case management, if you allow me, it's the comment term we use, just around tracking. Hey, I made the call. We did this and they did qualify for Foster or MKV. What's going on? So they can have live, real information and share it with the school without, you know, having to create separate spreadsheets or not sharing that information. That's just one way. We have a checks and balances now using these common, common devices.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass to my next board member.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Harris.
So taking that one step further, as we know, we have a whole ton of schools that don't have social workers or counselors or family support workers. Are they being given additional resources from central office?
So underneath these conditions, we, on these teams, there is a repurposing of some of the staff that be on these teams to pinpoint directly around attendance. Because the attendance, again, is one of the primary flags attached to the other things I, Director Hampson. Could be a connectivity issue. It could be that they're moved somewhere else. So that those teams, whether they had FSW or not, there is somebody, there is at least a team of professionals. Nurse, for example, they may, if they have a counselor, they have a principal, they have other interventionists. They have yell up, yell staff. Sorry. They work together as a team. And if they need additional assistance, that's what those learning support teams are there to provide the expertise that sometimes is required to make those connections for different services, including with our CBOs who we so have to partner with on so many of these kind of issues when there is absenteeism and we're trying to resolve things.
Okay. And my next question then, when we talk about our director teams, I noticed and I appreciate you sending out the new ledger for which directors oversee which schools or work in partnership with which schools. The number of schools are not at all equal for the directors of schools. Can you tell us what the reasoning behind that is?
Underneath our strategic, yup, sorry. Sorry, anything else, Dr. Harris?
No, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. So the, underneath the strategic plan, we called out for our African-American boys and teens as well as our students of color for the Strategic Human Justice. So using the traditional metrics that are in the strat plan and our student population, we tiered the supports for those schools that, based on the information that's the data that we're using to drive our work, drive our outcomes, the, the KPIs, you know, those objectives that we have. That's why we tiered those schools. So there is, for those who, who should get more support based on that, they, that's why there's less number of schools. But the same number or estimation about same number of staff. So that the ratio was a lot higher, again, for those who don't need, but a lower ratio for those who do need additional supports.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hersi.
Hey, yeah, thanks for this. Again, really appreciate all this. I, I do have some serious concerns about how are we communicating this information of families? I, I don't think that we've heard an adequate answer for that quite yet. Additionally, I have some huge concerns about our ELL communities, especially our East African communities and our various, you know, English language learner students. How are they, or what special systems are we putting in place to centralize or at least try to centralize translation in some way because it is so varied from building to building? And I believe that that is a big reason why we have so many students falling through our cracks. So could someone speak to what we are doing to ramp up our translation services and to reach our ELL families?
Hi, this is Carrie Campbell, Chief Public Affairs Officer. How is everybody? So I'm happy to speak to that. I think first I want to address just the attendance policy and, and where the attendance information is posted because that's what we're talking about. So it's in the FAQ. It's been communicated out through Schoolbeat. It's translated into our top five languages. And then we're also, just in general, how are we reaching our EL families? For example, today we're sending a robocall in our top 10 languages, specifically focused on food distribution and the EBT. Tomorrow, we also have another robocall going out. So almost a daily, we are sending a translated robocall centrally. I would also say that schools do need to share that information, translated with their own school communities because the context might be a little bit different.
Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Director Mack.
Apologies for the slight delay. My question is around, I, I really appreciate the extensiveness at which you've explained the systems and there is a robust system of reporting the attendance, et cetera. Appreciate learning that and that, that's all in place. What I'm curious to understand is how the attendance and enrollment and also the engagement dovetail in terms of when, for enrollment numbers to be reported to the state, they're based on attendance on a specific day. So the four-day attendance is the tip. There's, there's typically a four-day and then October 1, et cetera. So there's a typical process by, here's the day you take attendance and that's your enrollment. I'm curious to know how we're going to be managing in the current environment with so many students not engaging yet or we don't, you know, we don't, we, they're, they're likely, our students just, we haven't, you know, they're, how, how are we going to be taking that, how are we going to be getting that data in the most accurate way?
Yeah.
Do you want me to answer or you want to?
Uh, you, I could go, go ahead. Why don't you go and then if there's anything else, I can add to it.
Okay. So Joel Embarki here. So fourth day count in September is the count date for enrollment. We would need to see some evidence that they are attending that day, right? And we're going to have the additional 48 hours after to make sure that we see, whether we check on asynchronous activity. And then we'll have time to just say whether or not that fourth day count for September is, they were present or not present. And then in October is the first school day of the, of the month. It's the same thing. So I would just say that there, remember that we're able to go back and adjust our enrollment counts based on new information or updated information. So if there's confusion, there is time in the system from the state for us to update and correct our enrollment counts. So hopefully that helps.
Are you going to be sharing out that, that fourth day count and when it, when it comes? Can we have that information when it's available?
Well, it'll be our September enrollment count as of a certain date that we report to the state. When we make that report, I can share it.
And when does that happen?
I can't remember the exact date. It's like a few, a couple of weeks later. It's, it's not.
Okay, but it's within, it's not, it's not on day four, but it's a couple of weeks after day four. But yeah, I, I would appreciate having that information shared so we can see that.
I mean, we'll talk about enrollment at the budget session in September as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think I just wanted to tack on to the concerns around engagement and attendance and appreciate any additional activities we are going through to ensure that our students stay enrolled with us and stay engaged. So thank you. That's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Mack. Director Rankin.
Hi, thanks for all the info. I have a concern similar to this as I did with scheduling, which is, how are we communicating all of this to families in a way that they can understand and is useful? And, and on same for teachers. I, a, a general theme that we, we tend to have is being very inside baseball and there's so much information coming at everybody from so many directions that my concern is that we're not taking time to make sure that we're providing information about this type of thing in ways that, that families and teachers are able to absorb and follow. I mean, for families to know, to know what penalties might, might be or what, what they need to be checking on for their student. And for teachers, you know, what we as a system are asking them to track, enforce and how. So I have just, I mean, that's a, like a broader concern even than this. It's just that there's so much information all the time. How can we really, I'll go back to my flow charts that I talked about yesterday. How can we really break this stuff down so people kind of know, have the, the need to know, the need to know information in a way that doesn't take them, you know, 45 minutes to sit through and study? So that's one question and really. And related is, is Director Hersi asking about translation? And Chief Campbell was talking about translation and that some buildings will need to provide also translated materials. And I am concerned about the resources that buildings have for translation, that they're, you know, we, I see requests and periodically of, who, who do you, do you know anybody who can translate this for us at the building level? Or, well, we don't, you know, send that translated. Only information that's translated comes from the district. So how can we build, not just, and it's not just about communication, I'm talking about family engagement, which we haven't heard from family engagement related to this. How are we bringing all those things together to set everyone up for success?
So we, I can just, I'll initially start off on the, the part, Director Rankin, that you're talking about around staff. Staff are really critical to educate about these pieces. This amongst the other things like health protocols, the new digital platforms, the methodology of some, for some folks, leading community meetings to, you know, how, how do you work and partner with, with parents in a more, way more productive way? There's that and a mo, much other things. So the, the method right now is that we are working with SCA to make sure that the, that we are lifting off the protocol here or the, or the procedures around the tenants. Just keep working on the language and then additionally, putting out more, kind of like a cycle, right, of professional development that we're, we keep cycling back with school leaders and teachers, you know, on these really critical things that are in the remote learning playbook, that we continue to lift them and keep clarity. And then we give really direct support for where they can get answers made. And so that's, they, when they can understand it and they're lifting it off, they, they in turn are the best people because they have a relationship with the families, and there's a lot more of them. And that's where the connections and some of the things that, that help us system in addition to the things that we like, like Chief Campbell was mentioning, that we send out or we post on the website, which are other pieces that we'll do. But I'll let, I'll let her and Chief Bergy finish off.
So this is Joel Embry again. So Wyeth and I have been working on the attendance documentation, and we've been working with SCA as well, so that we're all on the same page, giving the same information. And really what we're doing is, there's a one pager that we're working on for, this is the role of the attendance monitoring team at each school, where they have to have a plan about how they monitor attendance and who does what. A one pager for the attendance specialist that each school has that reports it up to the central office, and then a one pager for teachers at each grade level, so K5, K8, secondary. So sending that out, making sure it's all lined up, that it's consistent, and then our family communication will be built off of that. We had done one draft, there were a lot of questions, so this is complicated. And, and we know that we have to go back and clear things up, and that's what we're in the process of doing. Carrie?
And then this is Carrie Campbell. I really, I really appreciate the questions about the family communication because it is very complicated. We have committed to making sure that our school leaders and our staff know our approach first, and then we will work hand in hand with colleagues across the organization to make sure that it is in family-friendly language. I love the idea of a flow chart. We've also been helping the Department of Technology create translated explainer videos that are graphic in nature. And so Director Rankin, you and I have worked together for a long time. I'm also super, you know, I invite your feedback as we kind of develop those out so that families really know what attendance will look like. And also this ties directly with the master schedule questions that Director Hampson had. So more to come, but all to say that it will be translated, we'll provide it through a variety of different channels so that families know. And I also just want to sort of touch on the question about school-based communication. That was not to say that the district office is not fully committed to providing EL supports. We absolutely are. It's that oftentimes, we're providing sort of broad brushstrokes and that sometimes the context at the school is a little bit different, and they can reach out to Michelle Otis' team to get support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Rankin. All right, Director Verissimo, you're up.
I have several questions, but I'll try to keep it to just the two that I think are most important right now.
I, I also have some as well.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'll try to make it faster. So we were just talking about the communications, and I hear that there's information, if you go for attendance to the FAQ, it doesn't look like the FAQ has actually been updated since COVID, because it doesn't really say what is attendance. And I think that's all our questions that we have right now, is what counts as attendance for families? It talks about what's excused. So it doesn't, it doesn't refer to like, but even in that context of excused, there's no reference to the excuse due to connectivity, excuse due to your parent's work schedule. I know I've seen that somewhere, so I'm really hoping we can get that on the FAQ page, because that is a static place where it's not, you know, if sent in emails and school meetings like that, it's great, but it's also not, people are going to go to our website, put an attendance in search bar, and they're not going to see anything about COVID-related attendance. So I'd really request that that gets updated. Second question is about, some students are only going to be able to attend in the evening because they won't have anybody during the day that can realistically help them navigate the online learning. So our, my question is, are, are synchronous lessons being recorded? And if so, do we have permission from students to have them recorded in those and posted for other students to see after hours?
Yes, there are teachers recording lessons and posting them. Depending on what the, the content or the instruction is, there may be different methods. But there are definitely teachers posting live lessons and then that, some of those issues that, like we were mentioning earlier, different conversations around just the flexibility or needs of the families, that we would have that also available. There, there are things, things, whether that's in a 504 or also IEP, that also, we want to make sure that we do those kind of things for students who are qualified for those services.
Okay, so to speak to the permissions to record students, do we have, have we obtained that? Or is that something, I mean, I want to make sure that we're not violating any privacy?
We're not requiring students to be, to post themselves online. That's the question, sorry.
Unless, are they somehow in the, like, if you're recording a synchronous classroom, students are there, they're talking, they might be in the videos. How, is that not, are the students completely out of those lessons that are synchronous recordings?
So we, we get permissions for anything that's posted online. If it's in, within the compounds of the video that only, that only the students in the, the class have access to, then we would be not in violation of the ability for them to, to share that information, because it's not being posted online or, or it could be accessed by others anymore than somebody like in a regular classroom.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Verissimo. My only question, excuse me, my only question, Chief Jesse, I had a LGBT community meeting on Tuesday, and one of the questions I had from a student was around attendance sheets. And I think another, you know, there's always opportunities where kids, students are going to be either potentially dead name, referred to the wrong pronoun. And, and the stories I heard from Tuesday were just how harmful and problematic it was for these young folks to be either outed in this way or made to feel, you know, embarrassed because the teacher wasn't utilizing the correct name or pronoun. So the question I got was just around our attendance sheets. And so, A, where do those, through what system are we, are teachers, you know, calling out names or what have you, or, or taking attendance? And wherever those are, the request was if we could add pronouns to those.
So that information goes into, thank you for that question, and that is a very unfortunate event. We, that information is in Power School, and they have a direct work stream on that to change the coding in Power School, to change, so that there is the fluidity of pronouns for that. I don't know, Director, Chief Bergy has some to add, but that's it.
Yeah, we've been, yeah, hi, this is Joel. And so we've been working on reiterating that information and sharing it out with our students about how you go about either getting a name change, if you have a preference about changing your name, or your pronouns. And so actually, some of that goes through enrollment planning, it comes through Power School, and then it comes out on the class rosters. So that, that's how that is handled. But we, we are putting together more, we're going to put together a, a simpler and reiterate that information out on our FAQs and push that back out to everyone.
Okay. I'll, I'll circle back with some other questions from that LGBT community meeting too, that are kind of centered around this too, and would love to continue following up on this. Just anyway, we can make our systems better, particularly
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Happy to talk to you, Director DeWol.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think this puts us to the end of the presentation, and thank you to our staff, and thank you to directors for a really, really great and thorough discussion today. And I know we have our meeting next week. Liza, can you remind me what the topic is for next? Again, I cannot remember our
Yeah, next week, we are talking about grading, grading the universal screener that Chief Jesse mentioned, which is just a, a sort of an overall consistent check-in with every student. It's not a, it's screener, sounds like it's a exam, it's not. So grading, universal screener, and priority standards, really basic building block academic standards for each grade level for kind of throughout the year.
Awesome. Okay, well, I appreciate that. That meeting is, I believe that's on Wednesday, so thank you for that reminder. And there being no further business on this agenda for today's meeting. This meeting will stand adjourned at 4:41 PM. Thank you, everybody.